Good evening and welcome to the public hearing to accept and accept expend gifts and grants $5,000 and over. Tonight, we're considering the Parents and Teachers Together to James Mastercola Elementary School for $19,000. I invite to the table Michelle Romaine, Principal of Mastercola Elementary School, Alicia Hansen-Pru, the Vice Principal of James Mastercola Elementary School, Val Brodsky, and Alice Donahoe. I almost got that wrong. So, welcome.
We are lucky to have two additional guests with us.
Excellent. And I welcome you to introduce as well. Thank you.
Good evening. We are excited to be here tonight to discuss the pending gift of $19,000 from the James Mastercola Elementary School Parents and Teachers Together, or the PAT. Here with me tonight is the Assistant Principal, Alicia Hansen-Pru, as well as some key members of our past boards of our PAT and our present board. So directly to my left is Alice Donahoe, who's a 4th grade teacher, and this year she is our liaison for the PAT between for the teachers. To her left, Val Brodsky currently sits on the board and is our programs coordinator. And then Amy Wilson, currently and past has been in our board and a member of the PAT. She was fundraising chair for a number of years. And then Tracy Boagard is a past PAT president. So all of the people to my left have contributed greatly to the gift that we're hoping to receive from the PAT. I'm in great, I am grateful to the PAT members, the parents of our Mastercola students, and the Merrimack community for the donation. Over the past two years, the PAT board has worked tirelessly. The board made a concentrated effort to concentrate their fundraising efforts really in two areas. One was programming, and the other was to increase the technology that we have in our building for students. Some of the fundraisers that they have spent their time doing included selling wrapping paper, dozens and dozens of Texas Roadhouse rolls, some of which still sit in our freezer, spirit ware, and our ever successful book fairs and book fair events. In addition, the students of MES earned money through our fitness fundraiser and events like Square One Art. One of the most exciting events that raised a great deal of money for us was the Merrimack Color Run, which was a collaboration effort by the three elementary schools and their parent groups for our students. The vision and collaboration among the PAT board during the past years and now with the seated board is to be commended for their hard work and collaboration. Their dedication has made a lasting impact on the students of Mastercola. The PAT board, in tandem with Nancy Rose, Director of Library and Technology, Michael Grant, who is our educational technology integrationalist, and input from the staff, put together a plan for the proposed gift. The purchase will include a cart, a classroom cart of iPads, and a classroom cart of laptop computers. This purchase aligns with the goal of both the district and the PAT board to continue to reduce the student-to-device ratio. We worked with Nancy to ensure that the purchases would be easily maintained and work within our existing systems. Mrs. Donahoe will share just a few of the activities and lessons that the teachers have been using our current technology for and the things they're looking forward to possibly using new technology with.
So, some of the uses that we feel that
Shall I?
Sorry.
It's all right.
So, some of the uses that we feel that the increase in technology will help in the building are give students better access to the new Envision math program and some of the new multimedia that goes with, goes along with the program. The also, the students will also have an opportunity to use the iPads for more of the dot and dash coding and Osmo coding programs. There will also be some increase with the laptop use and access for online research for certain topics that they, throughout the various grade levels. We also think that the increased availability will help with our literacy centers that we've set up and established through, within the grade levels in helping with the word work, the read alouds, as well as the writing activities that we like to have the students do. And also, we feel another thing that will benefit with the technology, the increase, is to just re-review the educational videos that are available for the students that can tie along with our Science and Social Studies program.
So, we cannot express enough how very grateful that we are for all that the gift will do for us, for all that the PAT does for Mastercola and for our parents who support us. We'd also like to thank you for your consideration, and we are looking forward to your decision of this gift. We would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so the process of a public hearing, we will take public testimony, and we can also ask questions of the panelists. The only request I make of the panelists, because this happened to me once, is if you could just stay for the vote in case there's a question that comes up between now and when we actually vote on the process, then we'd appreciate that. And that's very early in our meeting. So, is there any testimony from the public? And if you do have testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, are there any questions from the board? I had one that was vetted earlier. I know that in the past, we've bought from a company I work for, so in the event that there was a PO cut to this level, or a quote from my company, I was going to recuse myself, but that is not the case, so we're in good shape. I can just enjoy the gift fully. So, on that note, we can actually close the public hearing. So, consider the public hearing closed. We have to take a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene the meeting at 7:15. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is public participation. If anyone would like to come up to the microphone and speak, please state your name and address for the record. You can use that, or you can use the standing, whichever you prefer. Just make sure the green light is on the little one.
Hi, my name's Beth Grady, and I live at 15 Parker Drive, Merrimack. I'm just coming to speak in support of full-day kindergarten. I was at the meeting and listened to the presentation and read everything online. I'm a parent. I have a child at Mastercola in 2nd grade, and the next year I'll have an incoming kindergartner as well. But I'm also a teacher, and I've had the perspective of teaching both half-day and full-day kindergarten. I taught part-half-day kindergarten about 15 years ago, but I agree 100% with everything that they said. I think one of the biggest things people don't realize is that it's a full curriculum, and the whole idea of depth versus breadth gets in the way where they have two hours. It's half-day, but it's really only two hours, because then there's the lunch, to fit in an entire year's curriculum. And so, you can skim the surface and do the best you can, but learning opportunities as far as cooperative groups, learning centers, opportunities for differentiation where some students might benefit from, to be challenged, and other students might need a little bit more support. Sorry, I'm nervous public speaking. So, anyway, I just noticed when I was teaching, you just couldn't really get into depth as much as you wanted to with the curriculum. With full-day, another great opportunity is sometimes lessons go over, and they're not always as planned. And if you have full-day, you can revisit that and continue the great learning later that day, where you can't other ways. More opportunities for social-emotional growth and fostering independence. Now, I teach 1st grade, and I see students, my district recently switched over to full-day two years ago, and students are coming in. They have much more stamina for learning in 1st grade. They are also better adjusted to the routines of the school, and you can really hit the ground running in 1st grade. And then, going back to my parent perspective, I just, I see all these other districts, neighboring districts, and these children are having this opportunity of full-day kindergarten. So by the time our children get to 1st grade, they've had half the amount of education as the surrounding towns, and I just feel like that puts them at such an unfair disadvantage at such a young age. So, I 100% agree with everything that the kindergarten teachers were saying, and just really hope that the public knows how important this is. And like I said, I'm speaking as a parent, but I'm also speaking as a teacher who has taught both part-time and full-day kindergarten. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public participation?
Hello?
Just make sure the light's on if it's off. Is it, it's bright? Okay. I never turn it off? Good. Okay, we're good.
My name is Rachel Ricker. I live at Merrill Road.
Oh, you're not on.
Oh.
Yeah, we got a thumbs up from the back room.
Thank you.
The man behind the curtain.
All right, Rachel Ricker, 12 Merrill Road. I just wanted to take this opportunity to first thank the school board. You took a look at the facts, and you took initiative, and you put school water filtration in the budget. That's why I'm here tonight. This isn't a want-to-have item. I truly believe this is a need-to-have item. Our children's health and safety are a number-one priority, and that should, of course, include clean, safe water. So I urge you to keep filtration in the budget. I commend you for taking a stance in favor of our children. On a side note, I have been involved with the PFAS contamination in this town and trying to remediate it for about a year now. I actually meet with the town, two town council members monthly on the issue, and I'd be more than happy to meet with you to provide any further information you need on the subject anytime. And I just, again, just really wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. I think it's much needed, and I appreciate you. So I wanted to say that. Okay? Number one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Number two. And I don't want to overshadow that, because I think that's number-one importance, that what I want to say tonight. But since I did see full-day kindergarten on the, as a warrant article, should I talk about that now?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I have mixed feelings about it. And I just have a question if, you know, if, have you considered something similar to what Bedford did in their full-day program where they have a paid opt-in? So that way, families who want full-day have the opportunity to pay and opt-in, but the families who feel like their children may not benefit from full-day but half-day, still have that opportunity to allow their children to go to school for half-day. And that way, it doesn't impact the taxpayers, because the families who want the opt-in for full-day, you know, pay for that service. So have you thought about that? Have you looked at their model? I've read it. I'm sure you probably have.
Yep. And Rachel, unfortunately, when it comes to public testimony
Oh, you don't ask questions?
We don't, we don't get to respond.
Oh, okay.
Because that's, that's like a dialogue thing.
Sorry.
No, no problem at all. No, we just, we wanted to hear your testimony, though.
So that's just a thing. I've looked into that, and my testimony is, I guess, I've looked into it with Bedford School.
Did you like go off?
It's on.
We had a thing for a while where one of the microphones worked more friendly than the other, so.
You have to meet the other mic.
It's, it's wonky.
So, that's really it. It's just, you know, I saw it as a warrant article, so I just kind of wanted to give my thoughts. And I'm familiar with the Bedford model. I've researched it a lot, and I think it's interesting, because it kind of offers the best of both worlds. But again, I'm on the fence. I'm not 100% for or against it yet, and I appreciate you guys putting it as a warrant article, so the town can vote, right? For what's best for them. So, that's my statement. But again, thank you, filtration. Yes. Good job.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Hi. Catherine Hodge, 44, Belmont Drive. I'm just going to somewhat echo what Rachel said. Thank you guys for being so proactive and asking for the filtration. One thing that a lot of people that disagree with you guys asking for this don't understand, all of the studies are done on adults, adult men, to be more specific. Any of the studies that have been done don't show you the correlation between the kids, the babies, or anything like that. They don't give you numbers for the different diseases and things that are caused for the kids. My child's been in the system now. She's in 8th grade. She has never drank from a bubbler or water fountain or anything. And today, she actually came home from school, and she said, "Mom, are you going to the school board meeting tonight?" And I said, "Yeah." And she's like, "You're going to talk about the water issues tonight?" And I said, "Yeah." I said, "They want to get school filtration." And she said, you know, she goes, "Today, I was really sad." She said, "I finished the water bottle that I take to school with me every day. She goes, "I still wanted more water." She said, "But I know I can't drink the school water." That's coming from a 13-year-old. She won't drink the school water, and a lot of her friends won't drink the school water. So, just echoing on what Rachel said, thank you guys so much, and I hope people do understand that all the studies are based on adults, not kids, and this is something that we do need in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak under public participation? Seeing none, we will close public participation, go on to item number three, which is the board's response to the acceptance and expenditure of gifts and grants $5,000 and over. Based on the testimony we heard and the information that we have, are we ready to make a motion to accept the gifts and grants? Seeing yes, I see a hand possibly going up. Andy? Can I make my job easier?
Stalemate here. I, I make, I move that we accept the gifts of $19,000 from the Mastercola Elementary School PATT organization to be expended based on the spreadsheet that we have for the technology with our sincere, sincere thanks.
Seconded by Cindy. Any comments to the motion? Cindy, and then Michael.
I just wanted to thank the group for this very generous gift. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of work. I've been a parent in this district for a long time, and, you know, the profit margin on so many of these activities is so small, and it's so much work by so many parents. And so, to be able to come forward and be so generous with your time and the money is very much appreciated.
Michael?
I'd just like to reiterate exactly what Cindy just said, is that I understand some of the time that is spent by the teachers and the parents and the community that, to raise these funds, and I greatly appreciate everything that you've guys said. Thank you.
And with that, we will put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you so much, PAT, and we look forward to seeing the kids enjoying the technology when it, when it comes to us. So, thank you again. We really do appreciate it. So, on to item number four, which is the information and testimony regarding the utilization of Blizzard bags to make up snow days. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Marge, and she can lay out the agenda item.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to invite to the table Heather Gage and John Fabrizio, please. And as they come forward, I'll just set the stage and then do more formal introduction when they're here. So, over the past couple of years, as I put forward the proposed school calendar, we take a look at that calendar, and we take a look at make-up days that are always posted at the end of the year. And there has been conversation about, what about an alternative method of making up days? Perhaps Blizzard bags? Because I think board members have heard that there are other districts that choose to use that particular methodology to help in making up the days. So what I promised the board, because last year we were too far along the process, that prior to you getting the calendar, or at the same, about the same time, we would have a discussion, at least to be able to get some more information about this concept. And so, I invited Heather Gage, who works at the Department of Education. She's the Division Director in the area of Educational Improvement and has wonderful oversight about all the districts in the state. And John Fabrizio is really here for this particular topic as a parent of three children who participate in the use of Blizzard bags, because he resides in the Timberlane Plastow area, and that district has utilized this concept for a period of time. He will tell you such. So, tonight is to just give you as much information as we have. I'm not sure that we'll answer every question, but certainly for those that we don't know the answer, we'll find it out. But at least it's to give you more than was given to you in the past. So with that, Heather, do you want to start? Please?
I will, and thank you so much. If it's okay, I have a couple handouts that may be helpful in our conversation, and as those are going around, I'll explain what each one of those are. So, the issue of Blizzard bags actually comes up, believe it or not, in a lot of school districts because of our inclement weather that we have during the wintertime. And this year is, of course, no different. We started early this year. So, the Blizzard bag title is actually not, you won't find that anywhere in law if you go and, and look it up, or even in our regulations. But what we do have in our education rules, or what we call our ED rules, ED 30618, and you'll see that on one of the handouts that you'll see under the lesson checklist, there's one section in there under A7, and I'll just read that really quickly. "A school district may submit a plan to the commissioner that will allow schools to conduct instruction remotely for up to five days per year when the school has been closed due to inclement weather or other emergency. The plan shall include procedures for participation by all students." That's very important. "Academic work shall be equivalent," also important, "in the rigor and, in the effort and rigor to typical classroom work. There shall be an assessment of all student work for the day. At least 80% of students shall participate for the day to count as a whole, as a school day." So that's actually in our regulation, and then that got termed as Blizzard bags through, through our process. So what you have in front of you, the first thing looks similar to this, and it's just a checklist that school districts can use as they're considering the Blizzard bag process. And I do want to walk through that just a little bit, but just to let you know what else was handed out, we also have our current list and also last year's list, because requests sometimes come in throughout the year, but, but usually, we have them by October, November for a school district who wants to implement that current year. So you'll see in this form, just the school districts who we currently have approval for. What you, the one school district that is missing from this list, because it just happened a few weeks ago, is Derry. So Derry is also currently able to offer the Blizzard bag opportunity. The last one that you have is our technical advisory that was done several years ago, back in 2010, that is a technical advisory for our school districts that coincides to that rule that I just read. And so it gives a little bit more detail about what those expectations are, and that aligns with that checklist that I, that I provided to you. So, the, the one thing that, those Blizzard bag request reminders that's on the checklist are some key areas that I think are important to, to focus on as, as you might want to make this consideration. So the first one is the plan needs to be submitted in advance. So for example, if we were, if a school were to have a snow day in November, they couldn't then submit to the commissioner for a request to do Blizzard bags in December and count backwards. They would still have, they would still need to do that. In addition, a school district that receives approval for this, they, they receive it based on the number of days that they request, up to five days. If they want to have a, a snow day, but not a Blizzard bag day, just take it as one of their snow days. That's also acceptable. You don't, just because you have a Blizzard bag opportunity or approval, you don't have to use all of your Blizzard bag days. There's opportunities in there. But that does need to be submitted to the Department of Education, specifically the commissioner, in advance. There is an ability for you to pilot this, to see how it works, you know, get out some kinks and that kind of thing, but that actually can't be counted within your school days unless it's also approved by the commissioner. So, it's intended for days that are unexpected. So if you happen to be canceling school, or not having a school day for a PD day, for a professional learning day, that's not one of those options that you can use in this. It really is, as the nickname implies, for the Blizzard kind of situation. So it's not for any other school option when it, when schools are closed. Also, there, there is the option for emergency situations, and certainly, we can talk about that, but most school districts use it for inclement weather. Teachers must be available, all those teachers that the children would normally see in a, in a run of the day, has, they have to be available on those days. They have to have access to the internet, and they also have to understand the difference in, in classroom teaching, and a lot of our teachers do. I mean, this is, this is the new environment, of course, that we live in, but they have to understand the differences in teaching in front of a classroom and teaching online courses, which is not necessarily the same thing. I will say that, again, most, a lot of our teachers have those skills already, but we do look for what professional learning opportunities are you providing to your educators in that kind of learning environment to be able to do that. We also look, and if you look further through this process, and I, and I read it earlier, 80% of your students, in order for it to be counted as a school day, it's just like you have to go to a certain time during the day for it to be counted as a school day. Similarly, you have to have 80% of your students participating. We will be looking for the results of a student survey indicating internet access. However, there, you also must provide the opportunity in other formats. The purpose of this is for teachers to be able to teach and gather information based on the lessons for that day through internet access, and, but there has to be other options for those children who may not have that internet access at home, and keeping in mind, still has to be as rigorous as the children would receive in the classroom that day. So with that, that kind of gives you a little frame of mind of what that process is like. There's also a form that we have online for, for schools to go through to give us the information that we're needed. It's a pretty simple form, and we really like to know from the community, what the community thinks about this opportunity, so that the commissioner has a full range of knowledge of what the community is thinking for this, for this type of opportunity. So with that, I will stop and just see if there are any questions from the board.
Go Cindy, then Andy.
One of the things that you mentioned is that teachers must be available and participate. One thing that came to mind, as well as for students, would be like emergency situations where there is a power outage, for example. So let's say, is it a, you know, a certain percentage of teachers that must be available and not have their power out? I know that documentation provides 80% of students, but is there a certain percentage of teachers, or is it just expected that every teacher would need to be able?
There is the expectation that every teacher would. However, there is also the expectation that sometimes we have to have substitutes for various reasons, and so I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that if, if a, if one particular teacher had a power outage and a substitute teacher could come in and do that, I would caution, though, that substitute teachers may not have the knowledge, because if they haven't been in the professional development training and those kinds of things, may not have the knowledge of what does that mean for that day. We're talking about up to five days per year. So I would want to make sure that that particular substitute teacher was able to do that. And again, I'm sure we have a lot of them that do have that capabilities, but that would be another area that you'd want to look into.
And then I have another question, which would be based on the districts that you provided that have implemented this, these procedures. What would you say are the What would you say are the, kind of the implementation, you know, lessons learned, or what are some of the challenges with implementing something like this?
Sure. So unfortunately, I was actually talking to John about this before we started. I think this would be a great research study for an intern or somebody from, from college to be able to come in and help us, because we don't collect that information. I can tell you just from hearsay, from conversations that we've had with folks, you know, making sure that if you have a, if you have one computer in a home and four children at home, that makes it really challenging. If you have those power outages in your student, especially, there's certain areas of Merrimack that always lose power, right? My brother lives in one of those. And so those are, those are some of the challenges. And, you know, just making sure, you know, when you're, when you're, that's a different kind of environment than a lot of our schools, a lot of our children, as long, as well as a lot of our educators, certainly a lot of our families, who, you know, I didn't grow up in that ability to be able to, to learn from home. So I think those are some of the challenges, just the cultural shift of having that availability, and that comes with time. And I think some of the school districts that have used it very successfully have done a lot of work in that area around online and distance learning and those kinds of things. So there's a culture that's really been built around that.
Okay. And then finally, when you had mentioned getting community feedback regarding, so the commissioner can see, you know, what's the voice of the community, what does that typically look like? Have districts done surveys, or is it?
Yeah, no, that's a really great question, and a lot of times it is through some kind of community survey to understand, you know, the technology capacity of, of the particular community. Yeah, great questions. Thank you.
Andy?
I actually had two, because when, as sort of a parent, you look at this and you say, okay, so the district puts together a plan on how to do this. When you have an inclement weather day, what typically do districts do to sort of flip the switch to say, this is a Blizzard Bag day or not? Because I remember on the radio years ago, hearing, use your Blizzard Bags. But when you look at the, the WMER things like that, you don't see Blizzard Bags hardly ever come across. So is there sort of a methodology that you've seen used to kick it off?
So I'll, I'll respond, but I think John actually could give you some really great examples. A lot of schools use their, the call that we get from, from Matt in the morning, every morning at 5:30.
Sounds like a radio.
The following is the message.
That's right. It's exactly like that. So we, but, and so a lot of times they'll announce in, in that process, but those Blizzard Bags are prepared ahead of time, so that they, that they can ensure that it has all the materials and everything for those educators, so that they don't have to come all the way into school to be able to get those kinds of things. So, because there are paper forms and those kinds of things for, just in case there is that inclement weather, so.
So is the assumption that the material is current for where they're, where they are in period? Because my wife's a teacher, so I know that it's a very fluid dynamic to have what the plans are. If she's going to be out sick, she has a set of work for the subject that comes in. You never know when you create the process at the beginning, where the Blizzard's going, when the inclement's going to happen.
Right.
What's the methodology they use to keep what you do current, things like that?
Yeah, so, but we would have to really bring in somebody who's got the expertise in exactly how that they keep up with that throughout the year, but I do know that they have conversations at the beginning, the ones that are implementing, have conversations at the beginning of the year. Derry's a perfect example, who was just approved. They've put their, their bags together based on what their, what their standards are looking like during the, during the winter seasons, and how they can build supplemental educational materials into that, to make sure that they're rigorous. But John probably has some really good responses as well.
I think that you're right on there, Andy, with your comment about how to keep it current, how to keep it going. And, and the reality is, when it's online, in the online, they do announce it, and it is, you know, mine's Earl in the morning versus Matt in the morning. And, and when Dr. Metzler gets on, gets on and tells us, he says it's an online learning day, and the majority of the kids in the area that I'm in do probably do it online. And, and it's current because it's online that day, it's real time, they have the ability to be able to do that. The disadvantage is, as you said, the ones that have to be paper copied are often given out earlier in the year, and they're based at periods of time where they hope to be during that period of time. And it is, as you said, how do you adjust that? Often it's not, because it's been given out in an earlier time, to, to be able to prepare for the snow to come on that day.
So, which, which fades me into the second question I had is, when, when there's a snow day, parents sort of grapple with what to do, because many times, even though schools canceled, the parents have to go to work. So a lot of parent, I mean, I experienced this, you have standing daycare, like when a school's closed, certain daycares will open up, where you bring the, you know, you bring your child to another, sometimes to work, sometimes other places. There's not always guaranteed internet access or the focus of the caregiver that knows that this is going on. Is that part of the twenty percent that wouldn't participate in it, that falls in? How does that? Because it's not, everybody can stay home during a day like that.
Yes, and some of our communities, it's very rare, actually. So we've seen that happen in both, you actually answered the question. There are some daycare providers that participate in the Blizzard Bag day, where there are availability, that maybe they bring those children to the library that day, or those kinds of things. But then some of them just fall into that twenty percent. In, in some school districts, it's not that high, you know, some, it's, it's lower than that. Of course, at the high school level, some students are able to stay home by themselves while their parents still have to go to work. But for our young kiddos, that's a challenge, and that's something that, that should be considered by the district, especially in a survey kind of format.
Thank you. So a couple of things that I'm, I'm not sure if you, if you've asked, or obviously it might just be a little too early in this conversation at this point, but in talking to any of the districts, did you guys ask about success rate of actually getting the Blizzard Bag days to actually count versus not? And is there, you know, some, some districts that have been more successful with it? I know I follow Kearsarge because I graduated there, and I've, I've heard that there's been quite a good success there. But I think it definitely depends on the affluency of the district itself. So that's one question, then I'll follow up with another one after that.
So just on a statewide perspective, I think that's something that would be really nice to be able to collect. We have heard good success from Merrimack Valley, as well as Kearsarge, and, but we don't have any real good data to be able to tell you what that is. I apologize for that.
But that's, that's, you're early, so.
So I'll speak to the district that I'm a parent in, and, and I'll say that they have a high success rate, but that, that data is very interesting, the way you look at data. And it's successful because they're allowed five days after the day to turn in their assignments. So it's not necessarily due the day we come back. And that's a key piece of this, is that, that often, yes, the success rate is there, but it's not, it's not the, necessarily the day that it was assigned and due, in some cases.
Harge?
I'm so interested in the sheet that you provided of those districts that are engaged in the process and/or not. And I think for the public that hears of the concept, I think they think more than that are participating. And so if I add up, I think there are approximately eleven schools or districts that are participating currently. And it's interesting to me, because I believe there are only three that are over a thousand students, so that the, the bulk of those participating are small schools or a small system. And then I'm interested in the numbers that were doing Blizzard Bags and then opted not to. So do you know, when, when they stopped doing it, have they reported any reason why? Was it too hard to track the eighty percent? Or they didn't have enough teacher engagement? Or do they just give a reason, or they just don't go for reapproval?
They usually just don't go for reapproval. Superintendent Chaffett, they, we have heard from some that, you know, that it was just difficult. If I would have printed this list, since we started doing this back in 2010, the list is longer, but as you have pointed out, over time, school districts have come off, come on. We actually have some school districts who will do it for a year, then take two years off, then try it again, and, you know, those kinds of things, just given the option available to them. But we do have that. And just for the, just for the public, there are currently three non-public school, or within the last two years, there have been three non-public schools, eleven public, or what we call traditional public schools, and of course, two public charter schools that are on this list. And that's over the last two years, not all of them doing it this current year.
Yep. I'm not sure who was first. I heard that, okay. Send it then, Michael.
I was just going to say, can we put these materials online? Are they available publicly?
Happy to email them.
Yeah. So if we could put that on, so if anyone from the public wants to see this information, they'd be able to see it as well.
Okay. We'll just put, call it research for, you know, Blizzard Bags or whatever. Information on Blizzard Bags. Michael?
So my second question is actually in regards to technology. So you say that the teacher has to be available and present the materials to the individuals over the internet. So I'm not sure if, again, probably a follow-up question, just ongoing, I'm not expecting to have this information now, but the cost of, you know, possible webinar type of solution or anything like that, what that cost would be? What would we actually be able, need to provide to the teacher so that they have the equipment available to them at their home or anything like that to be able to provide this? So there's, I think there's a technology cost, and on top of that, probably added Burton to Nancy Rose and other individuals within the team to be able to support all that, too. So, I mean, obviously webinar solutions are getting easier, but obviously it still have its challenges, so.
Those are great research questions.
And I'll, I'll speak to bandwidth, too, and I'll speak to when you live in a home and you have three children, and, and they all need to stream something at the same time. And if you're lucky enough to have more than one device and, and have the ability to actually do that, it doesn't function well. We live in the land like that commercial of buffer, 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 and waiting for the thing to happen next. And that's kind of what happens in reality when you have seven classes per child, times three is twenty-one different avenues to explore online and, and do the module of classes that's available to them in, in the course of a given day. And you can see the, the time with one device, what that would take to, to do. So I think that although in concept, I think it's, it's got some great, great ideas around setting the calendar, your five days, stay your five days a lot of times. The feedback from neighbors and community, they enjoy it for the fact they can plan, you know, camps and things like that right at the end of the year. It has those benefits to it. On the other side, the flip side of it, it also creates an opportunity at home for, for students to have to try to learn on their own. It's different for them. It's not the same rigor or interaction they have within the classroom every day, and it still counts as a day. I think that it also, for students that are capable and, and typical and be able to act independently, it certainly allows them to do that. And they typically, those are the kids that do not struggle with home assignments or long-term assignments and things like that. However, you add a need in there, and it doesn't have to even be a, a critical need that would be a, a student with a disability, even a need at all, it lacks some support. And you, I think, Andy, you alluded to it, if you're home with your child and if you can help and support. Well, that's not reality for a lot of our families during the day. So I think that some of that loans to, do you want to have the technology, to your question, Michael, and two, do you have the support you need to be able to do it?
Michael?
I'm going to keep on going, I guess. So additional information that might be helpful, too, is that you brought up a good point in regards to they have five days to actually submit it. So my follow-up question would be, you know, how oft, what percentage of students that are actually doing it that day versus the following days where it becomes a burden on top of the other schoolwork that they have? And on top of it, it probably becomes a burden for the actual teacher to actually try to help assist those individuals that actually can get access the day of the Blizzard Bags. So I think that's a valid question. And I also think that at the fifty thousand foot level, Blizzard Bags have always sounded great. Oh, yeah, we get another day, we don't have to take it off. But I think all these questions that have been produced tonight obviously show a lot more detail that has to go into it, and obviously the planning checklist definitely helps, too, so.
And so much of this is by district. So in all of your great questions, it's leading me to want to do a survey to the school districts who are, who are currently engaged in this and would love to have questions, any questions that you think should be on that. But, but in addition to that, though, I would caution, even the results of that survey, using it as just another research tool, because Merrimack is going to be different than Merrimack Valley or Barnstead Elementary School, and it's just different. We all are different in our communities, and it's important that we make decisions based on what we feel is best for, for us.
And actually, that was what I was going to lead into, is that when you look at the list, I would say there's very few that, you know, Timberlane Hampstead is what I would call the comparable. They're, they're larger than us at forty-five hundred students. Yeah, I can read through them. The one, the next closest one is two thousand four hundred and forty-six students, which is Merrimack Valley, the one that they always think is us on the news. But tracking reporting is going to be very important on how we would actually be able to do that and, and, you know, be able to report into the state, because we have a lot, we have thirty-five hundred students. So based, for public identification, we have the list in front of us. So here's the type, the size of organization that's actually utilizing these. Chester Academy, five hundred and one enrollment. Cornish Elementary, ninety. Barnstead Elementary, four hundred and ninety-three. Dublin Christian Academy, a hundred and four. I mentioned Timberline Hampstead at forty-five hundred. Great Bay Charter School, a hundred and thirty-six. Kearsarge, seventeen sixty-two. Next Charter School, sixty-five. Moulton Borough School District, four ninety-seven. Lincoln Ackerman School, two twenty-three. Learning Skills Academy, sixty-two. Epsom Central School, four thirty. Merrimack Valley, as I mentioned, at twenty-four forty-six, and St. Thomas Aquinas at a hundred and thirty-seven. A little disproportionate. Oh, and Derry, I don't know what their enrollment is. That's not on our list. If, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Derry Cooperative is three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven.
So that's actually our comparable, right there. And so that includes Pinkerton Academy, is what you're getting at, or is it K eight?
No, Pinker, that is.
That's K eight?
Yes, that's K eight.
So Pinkerton's not included, so that's just K eight. So that was probably our comparable. But when you get to high school and the moving parts of that, having that data out of there, takes away what I would call an apples-to-apples analysis. So, but when you're looking at the sizes of these schools, the reporting that would have to be done, the compliance that would have to be measured, those are the concerns I would have if we, if we engage in this in a serious conversation. And John, just, you know, take your dad hat off, put your, put your work hat on, and I worry very much for those students. You know, we're all about offering equal opportunity for an engaging education. You know, we could talk about the legal term for it, but it's truly, you know, I think the spirit in which we try to deliver an education. I worry that the collaboration that some of these students need in student services will have them falling behind and getting a little disconnected in this, in those five days. Naomi?
On that note, being five days, it's a, a school week. What happens to school-based services for children with special needs during that? Because clearly, nobody's going to their homes to provide it.
Well, that's an interesting question. And as my, wear my dad hat right now, I'll switch and put my other hat back on, and I think that it's, it's a question I've had, and a lot of times, they make up services. That's what we, we typically have to do sometimes when, you know, you know, we do it sometimes when, you know, therapists are absent, things like that. It happens within a given year, you can have someone go out for a week with the flu and miss their services. Those things happen. We make them up, and that's kind of what they, they say they do on, on those days. That's what the, that's what, when I've asked, that's what's been told to me, that they make up at other times. They'll double up on certain days. You know, often, often when things happen, like assessment weeks, finals weeks, things like that, there tends to be more of a, a longer A D, where kids aren't in assessments, and they use some double therapies and things like that. That's what they do.
Okay. Are there other questions? Go ahead, Michael.
This, I guess, is more for administration process. You just brought up the point, is if we decide to move forward with this, what is, what are the next steps to this? Are we, as a school board, asking the administration to continue with this?
The, what my intent was, was just to put some information before you, because last year I said I would do that. And so this is my attempt to give you as much current information as possible.
So I guess if, I would like to actually, on the questions that were asked, maybe to continue this discussion and have a date set to come back with that information. I'm not sure if that's a vote that's needed by the board or just a request.
It'd be a request, it'd be just a, an agenda item. So unless you're asking for us to deliberate and make a motion, then.
I'm just asking for process. That's, so I guess, just asking for maybe a follow-up at some point and.
I think when I just want to know is, which particular questions are you wanting? If you're wanting ones from the state and so on, then I would base it on Heather's schedule and what she's able to do. If you're asking about doing webinars, that and what she's able to do. If you're asking about doing webinars, that's much more intricate, I would say.
No, no, just the general kind of questions that I think the board kind of asked, and I believe that you wrote down most of those questions tonight.
I think I have some of them.
Okay. And then, and then maybe just some of the planning request checklist to see if there's any of those that could be answered without in-depth kind of surveying or anything like that, to kind of, to see if, what the pulse is on, and also, I guess, maybe the pulse on the district and the parents, what their thought is, though.
Did you? Okay, Andy, sorry.
I was gonna say, what would be helpful in the next time we talk about this, is maybe get an administrator or something from one of those districts that's doing it there so we can ask questions directly of them to some of this. Because you're a parent, so you're getting that side of it. But a lot of ours are mechanical questions, or, you know, how they made the decisions, what kind of hurdles they had to go through. So for me, that would be the next best thing, is to talk with somebody who's gone through it, gone through the hoops, directly to be able to ask questions. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna be more complex than that. We gotta figure out from the district what to do. It's gonna be more than one meeting to do it. But I think to answer the questions that we've got, having somebody on the inside that's been in our shoes, whether it's a board, whether it's somebody in administration, to me, that's the, I think, the right next thing we need, the next time we talk about this.
Okay, excellent. So are there questions about the theory of Blizzard bags? Cindy?
One more, and then I'm done. But my question is around the post Blizzard bag, like, what information would need to be given to the state and when? Or is it subject to any audits or anything like that? Is there any other accountability that all of the criteria are being met, or it's all handled through the original request?
I apologize. Through the original request, we ask for what your processes are and those kinds of things. We're on a little bit of a hiatus right now at the state as we go through some reorganizational structure, but this does fall within school approval. So if you were to choose this, it would be something every, you know, three to five years, depending on what we're able to do with our capacity, would come, we would check, you know, how are things going? What is, do you have your written process? That kind of thing. If you were approved, you'll see that there's very few school districts who are using it right now, so it wouldn't be that heavy of a lift, given the fact that we don't do school approval every year.
Okay.
But it would be part of that process.
Thank you.
But you would not, I just want to reiterate, there's nothing that needs to be sent to the state based on that, except for the original request.
Okay. So with that, we thank you so much for your time. We're not gonna let this guy leave. We have more to talk about. There you go. And so we will go on to item number five, which is the 2016-2017 Parent Involvement in Special Education Survey results with John Fabrizio. So thanks for staying.
No, thank you. When these survey results came out, this is part of our compliance. And I've come to this board a few times now and talked about my perfect score of zero. And I say my, it's not mine, it's the district's perfect score of zero. And when it comes to our compliance areas, and this is indicator eight, and that's one of the compliance areas. And when I presented this at leadership a week ago, I began with a series of thank yous. And I thank both Matt, Marge, and Mark individually for their partnership in allowing us to achieve some pretty positive results on our parent survey, and the most positive I've seen for my years sitting around the leadership table. So I think that it's something I'm proud of. And I'll begin with a thank you to the school board. And I'm gonna start there, because I really do feel supported by the initiatives I brought forward. I think that I've come to you on multiple times to talk about our preschool program, our increase of early intervention, I look at Universal Design, RTI. I've thrown a lot of acronyms at you over the years and tried to ask for your support to, let's truly try to early intervene with students and expand our area of special ed into student services, and allowing us to be more global with some of our things that we've, our programs, our initiatives, our involvement with students, let's make that more global for our kids. And in doing some of that, we've also haven't lost our eye on the importance of special ed, in having an opportunity to really bring these parents in and make them part of our process. And it's important to us. And I thank you to the board to start for your support in allowing us to have some initiatives moving forward. And now I'll get to some of the, what is the parent involvement survey? So as I said, it's indicator eight. And so for the 2016-17 Parent Involvement Survey, it was sent out by the Department of Education for the 10th year. And what this does, it has all of our parents of students with a disability or who are on an IEP, a survey, so they can learn more about what's happening with the child, and also let us get feedback on what's working and what's not for our involvement with them as part of the process. So in 2015, New Hampshire began conducting the census service for two years. So they've taken it, so it used to be every year, and then in 2015, they decided to split it into Group A and Group B. We are Group A, and that was issued, as I said, in 1617. And more importantly, this data from the survey provides key information for our school district, both the preschool programming and what they call the school age programming. So it's basically kindergarten through 21. And it helps us learn about our partnerships with parents. So in this year, at a statewide level, they issued it, and the average score was 567. And that's a number, just remember, it's 567. And this is up a little bit from 560, which it was in 1415. So the response rate was higher in the district this year and across the state. So, which is good. And I'll get to some of that data in a little bit. So what is a scaled score? And I'm just gonna, again, today, this is a low-tech presentation, but it's kind of just to walk you through some of the information that I sent out to you. And that really, the items on the preschool and school age survey each hold a position on a nationally validated scale. So this is national data, it's collected about kind of people's satisfaction with programs. And so the items positioned in the scale refer to as the item's location. So where it falls on the scale from the bottom to the top in their location is that you have the majority of the people who've responded agree with that item. And as they go up in number on the scale, so you may see a 600 to a 560 to a 540, the higher that number goes up, it's kind of the more difficult to reach that number and reach that plateau and that higher point. So the national scale that says you're doing kind of a good job, the best way to say it, is 600. And that's what New Hampshire has adopted. That's nationally, they say, right around 600 is showing that your parents are very satisfied with you and where you are, and you're doing everything really, really well. And that's kind of what they've done. So as you'll see, questions from this scale score represent the parent's engagement in the practices and activities, and family largely agree that the district is doing what they said they would do. All right, your questions above that red line are the ones that really, the red ones are really the ones that are saying, you still need some improvement on. You're doing it, but you're not doing it to a level of full satisfaction from your parent population over a scaled score. So that's kind of what this all means. Now, let's talk about some of the numbers that were returned to us this year, which are pretty, for surveying, pretty, I think, pretty well and valid results. So in 1415, in the preschool, we sent out 52 surveys, and only 16 surveys were completed and sent back to us, which is about 30%, 31% rate. This, last year, in 1617, 52 surveys again were sent out, sent them out, and there was 23 returned, which is about 44%, which is a good percentage that were returned to us. So it's about 61 in our standard score. In our school age survey, we sent out 637 in 1415, and 134 returned. And this year, we sent out 608 and 141 returned. So it stays about a 23% response rate, which is pretty good. So for our district, we were able to hover around 25% that were returned to us, which is 164 surveys were completed and returned to us. So what does that mean? Percentage above, above the standard this year, 41%. It indicates that we've risen from 36 to 41% in our return rate, which is a good thing. Means the parents are involved, and the survey is still bringing in results from parents. So if you move to the page that kind of looks like this, this is our, this is, oh, excuse me, wrong one. This is our preschool survey. And you'll see, on the preschool survey, our mean score was a 652. And again, I say, the states, the state said that 600, 600 and above means you're doing a very quality job, and people are satisfied. We're at 652. So as I said when I began this, thank you, and we're at a point. And thank you to all the coordinators and educators in our district, because in our front office staff and our principals, because this says that we are engaging parents and really at a high level. We really only have, we have multiple areas that we feel really good about, things such as the preschool's special education programs involves parents and evaluations, whether for preschool special education and the services are effective. People from the preschool specification give me options concerning my child's services and supports. And then 647, a pretty high thing to achieve, people from the preschool education give me information about organizations that can offer support for parents. For example, Parent Training, Information Centers, Family Resources, and Centers for Disability and Groups. That was below our line last time I sat here and presented it. So it's good to see that we've put a conscious effort by improving our website, a presence on Facebook, and with our parent support group. We've done things over the last few years to rebuild this, to really try to get the word out and communicate it. And it's showing that our response back is, yes, I do know about this. So we feel good about the work and the efforts that we have done, are seeming to, by the survey, paying some dividends. So then, things we're still gonna work on, people from preschool specialization offer support for parents participate in trainings and workshops. Last year, Sheila Demers, our preschool coordinator, ran a series of workshops throughout the day with some consultants that talked about behavior, talked about assessments, talked about community gateway programs that connect with families outside. We taped those, I'll tape those, age myself, sorry. We videoed those, and we put those up online, so they're accessible. And now Sheila uses those as a tool. When she has a parent with questions, she's able to refer back to those, because they've been catalogued. Have to improve, though. That was one means. Maybe we need two or three more means to do the same thing, to get out that information, so parents feel that they participate in trainings and workshops. And we find other avenues to do that. We'll continue to brainstorm and work on that. And then the top one, of course, people from the preschool specification connect with families with one or another for mutual support. They're coming in at three years old and four years old in our preschool. That's a tough one, and we're gonna work on it. I don't know if I have an answer yet, but I'm always open to suggestions, and we're putting it out to our parent group to keep, continue to suggest to us about how to get there. They're kind of new to the whole process of special ed and the whole process of what's going on with their children. We reach to try to connect, but there's multiple different disabilities, multiple avenues. We're working on it. It's one of those ones that, it's a very, as you see, it's the highest scale and the most difficult to get to. So then if we move to our school age survey, which the line's a little bit lower, but still very high, and again, we are at a point right now where we're doing some pretty good things about, my school gives me enough information to know whether or not my child is making adequate progress. That's really far below our line, and we're pretty happy. And this, our mean was 554. Last time I gave this survey, now it's 579. That shows nice progress. And it shows that we are getting the word out a little more, like I said, through multiple means of media and communication. We're learning how to do this from a school and how to communicate this way. You know, and there's a few on there that kind of hit me in that red area to say, okay, what are you doing about this? And I think one that sticks to me very much so is, I was given information about the research supports, the instructional methods used with my child. Hmm. That's one that you ponder and say, how do we get that information out? And so we started, it's kind of amazing how fast action can happen sometimes. We started to develop kind of an online crosswalk between what does a certain reading program, what's the benefit of a certain reading program, and then where does that research come that allowed me, that allowed us to be able to bring this into our district. And we're trying to utilize district, utilize programs that are research-based, it's part of what we're required to do. However, I don't know if we've done a nice job, especially during the multiple transitions we have, communicating why one school may utilize a certain program for specialized instruction, and we may switch to another program. An example of that, we may use a lot of Wilson reading and Orton-Gillingham instructional approaches at our upper elementary school. Then we moved to a program called Language Live, which is much more encompassed, multimodal way of addressing reading issues. Both of them, really research-based, attack the same reading skills and the reading levels. However, have we communicated that? Hmm, not very well. Can we communicate in the future? Pretty well. Yes, we can. And I think that that's what this survey does. It makes us question, it makes us rethink things, makes us to drive forward. But overall, I think the results are pretty good, and I'm pretty pleased where we are. And I think that we know the next steps on how to get to the next level, too, I believe. So, any questions?
Questions from the board? Oh, they got loud, sir. I'll be back here. Michael?
I don't think it's a question as much as a comment. Thank you very much for coming in tonight and presenting this data. I think that it's always been impressive with what your team and yourself do for the district. Looking at the percentage of people that actually do these surveys is always a challenge, because when you have a few, and it's 30, 25, 30, 40%, it's usually ones that are more vocal, because they have their challenges. And I think there's a positive that can come out of that, because obviously you can get areas that are a bigger concern. So I look forward to your team continuing its efforts to better the process and everything that you guys are doing, and seeing what you come back with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing that, we know it's a work that, you know, every time you come forth with this data, you always talk about what your plan for improvement is. I think it's, this really does give that, like, list of actionable items. And I do see you making those efforts. You know, with what I'm seeing even, I do belong to that district parent group Facebook page, just to see how, you know, they're feeling about, you know, what they're seeing in the school district and the supports they have, and being able to share what they're experiencing. And I'd say the environment of collaboration on that page is very strong. And obviously, it has to be led by good information, or else it just becomes a repository for frustration. And it's not. And we can say that about a lot, we can't say that about a lot of Facebook pages, I'm sure we can agree. But on that note, you know, I definitely see it as a constructive environment because of the way it's being managed and moderated. And definitely worthy of a check-in for those parents who may not know what's, you know, what's out there in the audience that their peers in town, that can absolutely help them in parenting kids with needs. So the spectrum is on that page, so of resources and challenges. So worthy of a check.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Little plug. So, thank you very much, John. And now we're onto item number six, which is the board's response to draft warrant articles from the 2018 warrant. So in your packets, you have the written-out versions of what we discussed would be the topics for the warrant in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. And Matt, did you want to run through, just in case there are questions on verbiage as well?
Yeah, sure. The articles that we need board vote on are the money articles and the non-money articles. The first non-money article, we have as Article II. That just states to authorize the board to accept gifts of real property legacies that may become available to the district in the coming year. It's if somebody wants to give us a parcel of land or something like that, which has happened in the past during my tenure. So it's something that you can do without a vote of the legislative body. So that's the first one you have to consider. If you just want me to roll through, I'll just roll through, or we can discuss this, you please.
Do you want to go one by one? Are there any questions on Article II? Oh, we can do it at the end. Just so we have a chance to, so are there any questions on Article II? Naomi?
Not so much a question, it's a clarification for those who may be watching who aren't aware. Is this something that's placed on the ballot every year, or is it unique to this year?
It is every year. It is every year, yes. The reason why we can accept cash at these meetings is because probably around twenty-five years ago, I looked it up when I first got here, twenty-five, thirty years ago, the district voted to accept one ninety-eight, one ninety-eight colon twenty-B, which is you can, allows you to accept cash donations. This is, has to be voted on every single year. That one was just the one time and then it was done.
Yep. Okay, Michael?
Just, if we're going to talk about each one, should we, can we just vote on each one as we go through and just put them to rest?
If there are no questions, we could do that. That'd be fine with me.
I would appreciate it.
Okay. So, does anyone want to make a motion to accept Article Two? Michael, since it was your idea?
I move that we accept Article Two as written.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy. Any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero.
Okay. Article Three is the collective bargaining agreement agreed upon between the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association, which calls for the following increases over the current budget year. In 2018-19, the amount would be two hundred and forty-five thousand nine, five ninety-four. In 1920, two forty-nine, eight eighty-three. In 2021, two sixty-two, one ninety-two. As you can see, this is a three-year contract.
One ninety-nine.
Oh, one ninety-nine. Sorry about that. It's a three-year, three-year contract. It represents a, I can let Shannon take the lead on this, but I'll just give a rough cut of what the high points are. Includes a three percent per year salary increase. It also includes, you know, all the FICA, the Medicare, the New Hampshire retirement. It includes also a one percent healthcare concession by the staff in each of the three years. So in eighteen nineteen, they would be going to ninety-ten of the HMO plan. They would be going to eighty-nine eleven in nineteen twenty. And in twenty twenty-one, they'd be going into eighty-eight twelve. They've been contributing twelve percent, District eighty-eight percent. Roughly, over the three years, that savings is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollar concession that they're making on health insurance. It also includes an increase in their term life insurance from a death benefit of seventy-five hundred to twenty-five thousand dollars for those, all those covered under the contract. And includes a five-day increase in the administrative assistance working year to cover the needs of the district we have with registering kids and power school and our student information system, which is really important to the start of the school year. So in a nutshell, that's the particulars of the contract.
Right. So then I'm just going to do a couple follow-on data points and then go from there. What Matt didn't mention is that this is three hundred and nine employees covered under this collective bargaining agreement. If you just take the raw number of employees and the raw number from the amount of this year's fiscal impact, that's eight hundred dollars an employee. That eight hundred dollars covers the increase to their salary. It does not account for their consent, does account for their concession? It does not, does it?
If you're taking...
Their health concession?
Yes, that's included, yes.
It does, okay, so make sure it does. It must be in turn or out of turn. So it covers their concession, so we gave them three percent, they're giving back one, that's accounted for. But it includes all the insurance, the FICA, Social Security, those taxes that we see in all of our paychecks, cover, are covered in that eight hundred dollars. So when you think about what's going in their paychecks, they're not, that's not where it's all netting out. So this is, that's a full package. And the other thing that wasn't mentioned, which is, can be mentioned, is we are now at liberty, so the hundred and fifty thousand savings on health insurance is the apples-to-apple savings. But they've also agreed to allow us to deliver a lesser cost health insurance policy to staff. We don't have to wait for year two of the contract like we did with the teacher's contract. So starting right away, we'll be able to offer a, it's called an SOS Plan, Society of Service Plan.
Society of Service, yeah.
And that has a lower cost to the district to implement. So for anyone that does sign up for that, it saves the district money. And it's definitely good for those who are, you know, not needing a lot of medical services so they can take more of the money in their paycheck. We get to save money on our side of the ledger as well. So there's more savings that can't be quantified yet because they haven't been offered the plan. So there's more to come. So on that, Cindy, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, my question was really, I forget how we write this up, like in the voter's guide. We put some of the details in the voter's guide, right?
We do.
So it's like, all right, because otherwise this doesn't really tell, when you see it as a warrant, it doesn't really tell that story, so.
What the DRA wants us to put is not necessarily...
So voters can expect to see that information in the voter's guide.
Yeah, and there'll be more detail on the web with the teacher's contract. I think we had a page of information of high points on there. Like, you know, I put the healthcare concession and I would put the increase in the life insurance and I'd also put the one ninety-five. I put all that detail in there, including what Shannon had mentioned. And that would go on the website and most of it would go on the voter's guide, but I can expand a little more on the website, so. We use, I think we use QR, what are they, QR QC codes?
QR codes.
QR codes.
Little boxes.
At Andy's chiding a few years ago, so you can just hit the link, it'll take you right there on your phone.
So, just have to reload an app on my phone to get one though, Gavin. So, excellent. Are there any other questions on Article Three?
I don't know what they were.
Oh.
Andy? I just want to make sure people are aware that the way the warrant article is worded is that it covers all three years to show what the exposure is and what is being explicitly asked and to further raise and appropriate the first year's amount as part of this warrant. So that's the way that the warrant is, just so people are aware of the way it's structured.
Yeah, it's to San Bernize, and that's a word that's really not a word, but it's a word as far as municipal law goes. It's to San Bernize the agreement so that that amount for year two and three would be going in the following default budgets.
New Hampshire terms only, I guess. So on that note, I will entertain a motion to accept Article Three, made by Andy, seconded by Cindy. Any comments to the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. Article Four is if this prior warrant article that we talked to, the labor agreement, is defeated, it'll authorize the board to call a special meeting at your option to address Article Three cost items only. So if that article gets voted down, it allows you to go, allows you the ability to go back to the bargaining table and renegotiate the cost items only that are in the contract that were presented on the warrant that people voted on. It doesn't mean that what you negotiate will be in place, it just means that what you negotiate, if you come up with an alternative agreement, will be put before the voters once again. And it allows you to do that without petitioning the Superior Court for a special meeting. You can just call a special meeting yourselves.
Sounds like a plan. Are, is there a motion to accept Article Four? Made by Naomi, seconded by Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Article number five?
Article number five is to raise and appropriate from the seventeen, eighteen year-end surplus the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or not to exceed ten percent of the surplus to replenish the amount in the school district repair capital reserve fund. This was previous, previously established probably around ten years ago. And we extracted a certain sum of money from there, around two hundred and twenty-five thousand, to aid in the completion of the, I don't know how else to put it, but the BAT infestation problem. So that fund probably has around five thousand in there right now and this is looking to replenish it from surplus from seventeen eighteen.
I don't think the DRA would let you put Matt's House of Guano out of business.
No, I don't think so, no.
So, are there any questions on Article Five, comments? Cindy?
I was just going to make a motion to accept, largely because we've had to deplete those funds because of the BAT situation. So I think it's prudent to start to try to build up that savings again.
And we took a couple big hits to it on my time on the board as well, between the bleachers and I believe the insurance premium that are, not in premium, but the, what we had to pay for Superstorm Sandy. We have to pay for the roof, we have to pay for the insurance. Deductible.
Yeah, there was a deductible and then years before everybody was on the board, we were about to lose the road that went down to the lower softball field, so we had to extract around fifty thousand dollars from the fund for that corrective action and drainage because all the roof drains in the entire high school parking lot come out a giant catch basin that funnels its way down that road. So it's kind of like the rapids, so we had to use it for that. So, we have used it during the course of the ten, twelve years.
Right, what you would call them is unpredictable expenditures, but they, you can predict that we'll have unpredictable expenditures.
Correct.
There you go. So on that note, do we have a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor of Article Five, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Article Six?
Article Six is to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the purpose of repaving the circle in front of Thornton's Ferry, Thornton, yeah, that's right.
Thornton's Ferry.
Thornton's Ferry Elementary School to include the bus loop in front of the school and the lower parking lot. Those are in disrepair. We've talked about those on the capital improvement plan for a number of years and now it's its turn to at-bat as far as the CIP. And we just put it before you because it's an area that's been deteriorating over the years and it just needs to be reconstructed, ground down a base and then resurfaced.
Michael?
I just want to comment this. I actually went down to Thornton's Ferry's school today and reviewed the roundabout or the drop-off and it was definitely deteriorating. As Matt had said, it probably would look worse in the spring with the thaw and everything like that. Also noticed that part of the parking lot was, it almost looked like it was stitched together by rubber at, in one section.
Those are the crack ceiling that I was talking about. When we're in the summertime, you walk down there, you lose a loafer if you don't have shoes that are tied.
It literally looked like an art project from some of the kids that, you know, that they draw the squiggling lines, stuff like that, because there were so many. So I just wanted to just put that out there based off of my review today.
It looks like a no-win game of chutes and ladders down there. So, are there any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to, Andy, do I have a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor of approving Article Six, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero.
Article Seven is, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing one certain tract or parcel of land of approximately point six eight acres or more or less with the building there on known as One Brentwood Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Described in the town of Merrimack assessing records as parcel ID zero zero five D, et cetera, currently owned by the Southeastern Regional Educational Service Center. We all know this, we live in the superintendent's office, the Green House. John Fabrizio, Student Services Director, lives in the Blue House across the way. And this is the Red House, basically. So it's in our campus, our immediate campus. It's a building that is no longer going to be utilized by Suresk. Right now, it's being rented out by Nashville School District, but their rent will come to an end and their obligation thereof at around June thirty of two thousand and eighteen. So this is a warrant on an article to purchase the building and the land that it sits on.
Okay. Andy?
So I'd just like to add some more. I know we talked about this a little bit, a meeting or two ago when we first started talking about the building, but just to let folks know, this, this is the Brentwood School that's, if anybody's been to the high school, it's the red building that you see right as soon as you come into the complex. I think many people think it's always been a part of Merrimack Schools. Long time ago, I think it was, and then Merrimack, did we donate it or did we provide it? It's never been ours, okay. So historically, it's never been, even though it's been right next to our property. I mentioned last time that Suresk as an entity is getting out of the business of owning any properties. They had this building that was their school, they also had a function center in Bedford. So they're divesting all that. This building, for probably the first time in forty years, is now available. It's something that is like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Merrimack to be able to purchase a building that abuts our property, that has a building on it that could have function for part of the school, the school district. I mean, it's got a partial gym inside, it has classrooms, it has kitchen facilities. We have talked about potential uses of this building in the future. I think it's important to understand that any use of this building for any specific purpose is something we're not talking about as part of this procurement, but rather what we're talking about here is being able to bring this building in under the ownership of the school district while it's available. Because if we don't do it this time, chances are it may not be. Somebody may buy it to put a, something else on altogether which may not be appropriate fit next to the school. So I want to let people know that this is a, I highly recommend that we do this just to make sure we, we have this opportunity to bring this building, this land into the district, so.
So are you going to make a motion or what?
I'm voting.
Seems like only yours to make right now.
Yeah. And anybody who has any questions certainly can contact me because I've been involved with this for quite some time, so. But I move that the school board approve Article Seven, or recommend Article Seven to be put on the ballot.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Are there any other comments to the motion? I think Andy did cover it, yeah, absolutely. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Article Eight?
Article Eight, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to implement a full-day public kindergarten program in the three elementary schools. Such sum to include eight hundred and eight, nine hundred and one thousand dollars in additional salaries and benefits and sixty-nine thousand five forty-nine for the original equipping of additional public kindergarten classrooms. The reason why we split that out, the eight oh eight, nine oh one is going to be a recurring cost of the salaries and the benefits. And then the sixty-nine five forty-nine is for the additional furniture for the kindergarten classrooms and the additional instructional materials of the kindergarten classrooms. So that's more like a one-time cost and the eight oh eight will be the recurring cost of public kindergarten. It also has a note there just to make sure, because we want to include this if it does pass in the default budget for next year, that if adopted, the cost of salaries and associated benefits will be included in the operating budget in future years. That was cobbled together with the help of legal counsel and the Department of Revenue Administration.
Okay. Well, I will move to accept Article Eight, because I don't do many motions, I want to keep it fresh. Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy. On this note, there's a couple notes, footnotes we want to talk about. We have to, in this warrant, talk about costs. And costs are what the outlay of money is. What we don't get to put in a warrant is revenue. And the state of New Hampshire, for those who are expanding to full-day kindergarten, allows an additional eleven hundred dollars of aid to schools, so from the state down to us, that won't be in your local tax, so there'll be a revenue to offset that to support full-day kindergarten. I think there's been discussion and questions about what happens if it becomes a fee-based full-day kindergarten? And I believe what you do at that point is you no longer have eligibility to that eleven hundred dollars. So that revenue would not be available to us.
Per student.
Per student, I'm sorry. Per student, thank you for that, that's very important.
It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right, so, and that's a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar offset to the eight hundred and eight thousand dollars recurring. So that would, that would be lost if we charged tuition.
Yeah, to make it a little more complicated, because when those, the DOE is allowing us to put those in our average daily membership, year one. And so that's how we get the aid, because they're in our ADM. And when you tuition a student in, you still count them in your ADM, but you have to report the amount of tuition you're getting from another district. Let's say a kid would be coming in from another district. We still own him, he's in our ADA, but we have to report that tuition side coming in. So that takes care, that basically, essentially takes the aid down because we're getting funds.
Okay.
And funds from parents or funds from another district, doesn't matter.
Okay, so, any funds, so if you charge tuition period, that would offset that, okay?
Right.
Cindy, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we will be able to put a description about that, once again, in the voter's guide so that the voters really understand the big picture. of the expenditure versus what we're getting.
Yeah, there's the gross cost, which we have to do per law. And there's the net, which will show up as a revenue on the estimated revenues. And if this goes forward, you know, the two will, you know, work themselves out. But that's something we definitely need to put in the voter's guide to show what the net cost is.
And we can't do any notation on the ballot itself, on the warrant itself.
No, we have to show the gross cost of the article.
So, our only choice to be able to get that information out, at least on voting day or whatever, is in the voters.
Absolutely.
Okay. Andy?
So, a couple of points I just want to bring forward. So, as Shannon mentioned, the funding from the state for full day kindergarten is incrementally $1,100 per student on top of what we get for the half day. So, it's what, 2,900 total? 2,900 per student if we go to full day. Additionally, that $1,100 incremental is only for the first year and it's guaranteed minimum. It could be higher in subsequent years depending on the statewide Keno revenue. It's interesting, Keno, even though Keno might be in certain towns and not in others, they take all the money, batch it together, and then they divide it. It's not based on what town has Keno, what town doesn't. So, if Keno takes off in the state, we stand to make, bring in more than $1,100 per student in future years. So, that's a minimum level that we're talking about. The other piece, somebody asked earlier, and you alluded to this too, about tuition. States or towns that decide to charge tuition for full day do not, are not allowed to accept the $1,100 fund because the way that the RSAs are written is that you have to provide full day kindergarten by receiving this $1,100. If you choose to accept it, you could charge people, but if somebody comes to you and say, "I don't want to pay," you have to say, "Okay, fine. You can come without paying." So, essentially, it becomes part of the public program that is covered by, just like a public school at that point. So, those are the two things I wanted to bring forward, the reason that the full day and the way that the state statutes are written.
Naomi?
I wanted to build on the for pay, the tuition point, which seems to come up quite frequently. There's already private kindergarten. I mean, there are people who run for-profit kindergartens. They are available in Merrimack. It seems to me that what we're asking here is whether or not there should be public kindergarten. And as soon as we ask whether there should be public kindergarten and we then put tuition on it, we've created inequity in our own community where only people who can pay can access the public kindergarten. And so, it seems to me that the fact that it's tuition free is an important ethical point as well beyond the Keno monies in that, at the moment, parents who wish to pay for kindergarten can do so. There are places they can send their children. And so, what we're really talking about here is whether or not, as a community, we believe that all the children in our community should have access to that kindergarten.
Excellent point. Thank you. Michael?
So, I'd like to just reiterate some of the information that was shared during some of the discussions in prior meetings in regards to why I'll be supporting the kindergarten, full day kindergarten. There we go. One is some of the concerns that I have, obviously, is that surrounding communities seem to be going towards full day kindergarten. That could actually, if we did not have that, could be an impact on our valuations of our actual homes within our town. Additionally, it could actually be an impact in the commercial companies coming into our town because, obviously, they might be looking for towns that are providing that and their employee base could have access to, obviously, full day kindergarten too. Additionally, that just leads to the parity within surrounding communities that are looking to move forward with it also. And for me, it's also about equal access for the children. Anyone can have access to the education the full day kindergarten would provide is actually much more rigorous than the half day. And if we were to do, pay for that, have that pay for the full day versus half day, again, I think it eliminates some of the people that actually might have access to that and actually would put them behind the other students that would be coming in in first grade and beyond. Additionally, I understand that there is a cost to a taxpayer, but for me, it's a social contract that I believe that we have for our children in our society. And better educated individuals pay higher taxes when they come out of school and therefore they actually pay it back in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I have a question about how much money this is going to add on to the budget as it stands right now with half day kindergarten. Is it like, going to be like, what's the number that we're adding on top of half day right now?
Well, if you're talking about the net amount for year one, it'd probably be around $600,000.
Why didn't we instate full day kindergarten when we first started doing kindergarten, like 13 years ago? Is there like a reason we didn't do that or is there like?
Marge?
I think, Chris, the concept was one that Merrimack hadn't yet embraced. And so, it was called better to go with a half and see if we could get the community to buy into that. And so, as you know, because you're a graduating senior, this.
I'm actually a junior.
Pardon me, junior. Well, I moved you up a year. But we have, the graduating class is the first one to have gone through kindergarten. And so, we've had it for 13 years. And so, it seemed now was the right time. And also, it's really, we're incentivized when, in fact, we have an additional grant. So, you take 1,800 plus the 1,100 coming from Keno. That's 2,900 a student. So, it seemed like the right time.
I'm just waiting for his next question. You're good? Okay, we're good.
Yeah, it kind of follows the same.
The mic was his though, so.
It kind of follows the same parallel because when we put in half day kindergarten, we've got, we had the kindergarten construction grant, which was well over a million dollars. And that paid for replacement classrooms in the middle school. So, we could apply in order to get space. When we did the grade reconfiguration, we created additional classrooms that gave us the space for the half day and it actually paid for a portion of building the middle school. So, that was a time when the money was there. The grant was in jeopardy of going away. And now, we're in kind of the same position where we have the Keno money kicking in in 1920. That's an additional grant that we could get based upon what's being played out right now, so.
And I think we said it once, but it's important to say it again. And if we don't offer the program to all of our children, for all of our children, then we don't have access to the 1,100.
Andy?
One other point. I've heard it brought up previously that there can't be room in the schools to be able to do this. So, we're going to have to add on. We're going to have to do stuff. And the answer is because in each school, there's been some creative work to make sure that programs are moved and be able to house all the students in kindergarten that are maybe today normally either morning or afternoon, but we're able to, with existing space, be able to remove things around and be able to accommodate all the students and the programs. And that the 69,000 that's the added, the separate piece that's listed in the warrant is to be able to add additional equipment, you know, like desks and things like that as appropriate, to be able to make sure that they all have a place to sit, things like that. So, there's no other infrastructure cost to bring this other than that amount just for tooling. And this is across all three elementary schools.
Absolutely.
Forgot that. Any other feedback? Go ahead, Matt.
No.
No, I thought you just did that, sorry. Any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8 as written signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Article 9? Back to you, Matt.
Yeah, Article 9 is the operating budget. It's to raise and appropriate $74,811,416 for support of the schools. We've gone through several board meetings, budget meetings. This represents a .74% increase over the prior year's budget. It also mentions the default budget of $75,153,500. So, we are actually in this budget, $341,589 under the default budget. So, default budget is more, plus more by 341,000. So, this is just to vote to bring this to the budget committee right now.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept Article 9? Made by Cindy, seconded by Michael. All those, any questions, comments? We've really spent a lot of time on this thing, so I would be shocked if you said yes. Cindy?
Well. Before we close out the whole thing, I was hoping that after we go through Article 9, that you might explain the next steps for the budget so that people that are following these items understand the budget committee and then the deliberative session and then finally the ballot. That's what I was hoping, that we could just kind of walk through that high level process to make sure that that's understood by the public.
Sounds perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye. Aye opposed none. The motion carries 5-0-0. And on to Cindy's excellent suggestion. I was going to jump right to deliberative, but let's talk about the budget committee's process as well. On our website, we do have information about our budget committee, their hearing dates, the subject matters they'll be going through at each of their hearing nights, the membership on the budget committee. I believe they have a group email as well. So, any questions, comments on budgetary items that you want to pose? Right now, the budget is out of our hands. We moved it and it's in the hands of the budget committee. So, they will be working the second set of eyes, as they have for decades, on the numbers that we're presenting to the voters. And the next formal presentation of the finalized budget that the budget committee will be presenting will be at our district deliberative session, which is Thursday, March 8, 2018 at 7:00 PM. And the snow day would actually be Friday, March 8. And let's hope, I'm sorry, March 9. Let's hope there's not snow. So, we've not had snow day yet. Let's keep the streak alive. So, on April 10, we'll be actually voting on the budget itself. We'll be in the booth talking about our town and school ballots. That's Tuesday, April 10, 2018. And based on your area of town, you will have a voting district. So, the three locations are the Maschacola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and the St. John Newman Church. And with that, if you have questions on where your voting site is, because we have changed it a couple of times in my tenure here, definitely call the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office and they can give you guidance on how to find out where you vote and also how to register if you haven't done so already. So, on that, did I miss anything? Because I've been talking a lot tonight. No, we're good? Okay. See, I did miss something. What?
I feel like I'm like the website police today. But could we also get a description on our website, the school district website, that's really accessible, that explains those dates? I know they're on the calendar, but I think for people following the budget, that it's right there when they go to the district page this time of year, at least until we get through.
I see a few of those being taken.
Yeah, feverish.
Excellent. Okay, we're on to item number seven. We're only on item number seven. Wow. The naming of the Gifted and Talented Program. So, I will turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. So, in the process of the budget discussions, Board Member Gualyumi raised a couple of questions concerning the, sort of the naming of the Gifted and Talented Program in our district and wanting some additional information and discussion about that. And so, I appreciate the request because it provides an opportunity to kind of revisit something that was a significant change in our district a few years ago. So, it's a good opportunity to kind of talk about it again. If you'd permit me to just go back in time just a little bit to get me to address the question that you raised. So, really, one of my first years here in Merrimack, the sitting board at the time asked me to do a little investigation about the Gifted and Talented Program then called Gateway because it was the, there was a question as to how effective it was at that time and whether or not there could be improvements and so on. And so, I did that and gathered a team of teachers, administrators, gifted and talented teachers, and we really began to do some research on the issue and then compared that research to what our program at the time was and began to sift and sort to figure out what it is exactly that we wanted to do and what service we wanted to deliver. So, one of the places that provided us with the most helpful information and still does is the Johns Hopkins Center for Gifted and Talented Youth. I believe now it's called the Hopkins Center for Talented Youth, but at the time, it was the Gifted and Talented Youth. And some of the information that I've provided to you in your packet comes from them and also the National Association for Gifted Children. But one of the things that we learned when we were doing that investigation is that there really is a definition of giftedness or gifted and talented that is very specific and can be identified in really very specific ways. And so, you know, I have two children and in my world, they're outstanding children, but they don't qualify as gifted and talented in the way that the Hopkins Center for Gifted and Talented Youth defines them. And so, one of the other things that we learned is that the, in the same, if we look at special education as a continuum, we most likely recognize special education as being a service provided to students with some kind of academic challenges or special needs of one sort or another. But the other end of that continuum is looking at students who are identified as gifted and talented as also having special needs of a sort and needing to be attended to to some degree. And so, what we have been doing in Merrimack for a long time is providing some services to those students. The question was, at the time that the then sitting board asked me to look at it, is are we providing services sufficient to the needs of those students who are identified? And we didn't really have a very good protocol at the time for identifying. So, it was kind of populated by students who were recommended by teachers because they did their homework or because they were good kids or oftentimes because they were what would be called very bright. And one of the things that the Hopkins Center really schooled us in is that there's a distinction to be made between students who are very bright and students who are gifted. Giftedness is a very unique and specific definition and it belies certain easy identifications. In other words, some students with very poor grades actually qualify as gifted students or could. Sometimes, students who might not always fit in socially for a variety of reasons might be determined to be gifted students, not because they don't fit in socially, but because that's a characteristic of some students, but not all students. So, what we realized is the easy identifications, you know, always involved in athletics, always involved in extracurriculars, doesn't necessarily define a student who is gifted and talented. So, then the Hopkins Center for Gifted and Talented Youth provided a sort of a metric for how you might come closer to determining who would be in that category. And I say closer in determining because nothing like this is ever etched in stone. It's very likely that no matter what metric you use, you could inadvertently sort of identify as gifted some students who are not or inadvertently eliminate students who should be. So, it's an imperfect science, but the Hopkins Center says that if there are a variety of measures that are in place and that we have a very rigorous, so it's a triangulation, so you don't just have one test and determine it. So, you take a number of assessments and then a teacher feedback, it's called the SIMS, then those together at a very high benchmark of 95% or above would be determined to be in the Gifted and Talented Program and then therefore receive those services. In Merrimack, those services are provided by three teachers, each of whom share two schools or work with two schools. And in addition to that, in our new model, we've tried to provide opportunity for enrichment for, that those teachers in collaboration with the principals and the teachers in the classroom work on to make sure that there are school-based activities for enrichment so that all students can participate in addition to services for students who just missed the threshold of the 95% of the three assessments. of the three assessments, plus the teacher recommendation part. And so, we continue to try to perfect that model, so that students are provided supports who are identified in the Gifted and Talented Model, plus other students as well. And that's the model that we've developed, and that we're implementing right now. So the question that's raised, that I think Board Member Gualyumi raised, had to do with whether the name is somewhat alienating to some, to students, because in a way, you know, all students are special, and of course, all students are special. The name of the program, when I began to look at it, was Gateway. And the Gateway Program was the name for the Gifted and Talented Program in Merrimack. At the point that we gathered our revised information and our revised research, we felt that enough of the program had changed significantly, that if we kept the previous name, that the branding of that name was so connected with past practice, that it would confuse people. So we keep the name, but we're doing things very differently. So as a committee, we thought we should really get rid of the Gateway name, which has so connected with the previous way of doing things. And ironically, since this was a group dealing with very creative and gifted and talented people, we became very uncreative, and we just, for the time, called it the Gifted and Talented Program. And to this day, that's where it resides. We have talked a lot about opening it up to students for their feedback, to name the program, and so on. And that's something that I'd like to still think that we could do. But for the moment, the reason that we changed the name from Gateway was primarily so that we could separate the brand. There was that, and now there's this. And the this, the new program, was really substantially different. It limited the number of people identified, it added a metric for determining, it added assessments, and it really just changed the whole configuration completely. I won't bother reading the information sheet to the board, you've had a chance to look at it, but for the folks in the public, I've just provided a federal definition of gifted students that's in the Revised Elementary and Secondary Education Act, an estimate by the U. S. DOE about the number of public school students in the country that are enrolled in Gifted and Talented Programs. And that number is about six percent. So it's a very small number of students, a very specific number of students. And that closely mirrors Merrimack's model. Then just a brief description of giftedness, brief description of the Rinzouli Framework. I don't mean to get, you know, all technical, but there is a man, researcher named Rinzouli, who years ago developed a framework for giftedness that Merrimack has followed and continues to follow, and a brief description of that. And on the backside, just thought it would be interesting myths about gifted students, published by the National Association for Gifted Children. And one thing that I just would call to your attention is, a myth is that all children are gifted. And the clarification there is that all children have strengths and positive attributes, but not all children are gifted in the educational sense of the word. And the one thing that we've really tried to do in Merrimack is highlight the educational sense of the word as distinct from students who are really good kids or super bright. And also, a myth that gifted programs are elitist. The fact of the matter is that we try, in this district, and most districts I know, try very hard to serve the needs of the students as they present. And so some students are challenged in some of their learning, and we do not stigmatize that. We support them, and give them everything we can to support them. And likewise, students on a different end of a spectrum of need require certain supports too, and we don't stigmatize, or call names to, you know, the people who would need that. And so, just wanted to point that out. And then, just a couple of interesting sort of misconceptions about students who, how could a student be gifted if he or she received poor grades, or, you know, if a student has a disability, how could they be gifted? And so this helps to clarify that. So I'm happy to continue the dialogue and to talk. My aim tonight was just to go back in time a little bit to provide a little sense of the context and the history for how it is we got to this place, why it is that we changed the name. And just to sort of reiterate how much we've relied on the research base that's really counseled us, not in an elitist way or a separatist way, but to say that there are some students who really have needs on this end of the spectrum, and so we're going to really try to support them as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And I think Cindy had her hand up already.
Yeah. So thank you for this information. It does provide some background. I think that, you know, really, my concern was around the name. I think that providing the rigor and providing the challenges for those students is absolutely our responsibility. And, you know, how could gifted and talented, as it's called, child get poor grades? Because they're bored. And that's how I, that would be one reason that I could think of, as to how that could happen. You know, my question was really around labeling the kid versus the program. And definitely not that we shouldn't offer that. In fact, I question sometimes if we do enough of that for the students that really need it. And I would challenge us internally to look at, to go back to the information that you've provided, and say, are these the students that we're identifying? You know, do we have anyone in the program that was defined based on their high achievement capability, and creative or artistic, or specifically because leadership? Not because, like you said, maybe, you know, they get good grades, hand in all their homework on time. You know, do we have a cross-section of students that is what we're reading about here? So I thank you for the background. I'm not completely tied to changing the name or not changing the name. I just simply questioned the label of the program versus the kind of support and the kind of rigor that we can provide students that need it.
Yeah. And I would add that when we did go from Gateway to GNT, it was done in a budgetary conversation. So it definitely looked at how we're going to be budgeting it going forward, going to this gifted and talented line item, and how it was going to serve the students. I think this foundation data really kind of defines what we, the shift we made in a very comprehensive way. And I think that's definitely for those who may have seen the transition happen, they can see basically how that transition was founded. So that's, this is excellent information, I think, as parents are coming into the system and looking for extension for their child, that may also need intervention, that they can look at, you know, what this program may do for their child, if their child seems to fall into that category. So where they may not think they're eligible, but truly could be. So I think this is great information for parents to really understand what all goes into it. If we did want to rename it, I don't think that's a terrible thing at all. Especially, you know, when you talk about, you're right, labeling students. You know, do you want them to, you know, be, I guess, looked at as, again, elitist? No. Do you want gifted and talented, by definition, can allude to that. And others don't have that delineation. So no, I definitely see exactly why you brought that point up. I definitely think that there can be a way of branding it, as we're talking about, in a way that shows that, what that program can deliver. So looking at those definitions of what deliverables of that program, to come up with a name that I think really identifies what that program delivers to the student, and better engages parents in understanding what that could do for their child. So I think it's a great starting conversation. So I appreciate it. Sometimes we just mention stuff, and all of a sudden, it's an agenda item, because they really, they take, they internalize it quite often. So I appreciate it. It was a great, great presentation. Onto item number eight, which is the approval of funding requests from the Public School Infrastructure Committee. I gave it over to Marge and Mark? There, Matt, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm just going to start, and then turn it over to Matt. In your packet, you have a newspaper article that appeared in October, which was beginning to define this one-time opportunity for school districts in this state. And the opportunity came because there was nineteen million dollars in twenty seventeen state surplus, and that was to establish this fund called the Public School Infrastructure Fund. It was something that was wanted by Governor Sununu, and it really asked districts to come forward, to fill out grant applications for three kinds of things, for safety projects, for security items, and for Internet connectivity. And Matt was right on it, and the timing couldn't have been better, because obviously, we had the bat guano that we were dealing with unexpectedly, as well as we had really determined that we wanted to get into more cameras in the district. So I want him to go through and talk to you about what he did. And he was very successful in his effort, and the letters that you see from Governor Sununu speak to that. And when he finishes, then I'll come back around and tell you how we're going to access this funding.
Okay.
Thank you. The first one that we really haven't talked about is for safety and security. And that started off with an assessment by Scott Lambertson of the Department of Homeland Security, who is touring all our schools. He's doing the high school, and he's done Merrimack Middle School. And you have to have that in order to be approved for the grant. You have to have a emergency management plan filed with the state. Those are all done before the deadline of September first this year. And then he had to go through your buildings, and look at your shortcomings, or, you know, praise you for a lot of stuff that we're doing good. And when he was looking at us, there was a lot of positive things that he was, he said that we were doing great as far as school security goes. We've touched all the major bases, as far as our entrances and everything like that. A lot of school districts, they don't have the airlock entrances, the click to get in. They're just in the building. And we corrected that a few years ago. So we had the security cameras in the budget, and he encouraged me to apply for the grant. And the amount of security cameras that we had budgeted for was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, and we received eighty percent of that. So we've been approved for a grant of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars from the security cameras. Now, we can look at that to try and, you know, feather in some more cameras, once we get those funds. This is something that, when we talked about at first, we talked about in front of the Budget Committee last time, that to do all the cameras that we need to be done, as far as inside, exterior, upgrading some of the head end where everything comes in, it's a sizable amount of money. So this will help us along our way to making our schools a little bit safer. And then we had another fund, and searching for a name for it, I named it the Bat Infestation Remediating, remediation project. So that was, that started off with a meeting with Marjorie Schoonamaker, who's in charge of school approval for the Department of Education, and also Amy Clark, who was kind of overseeing the building aid or the building standards piece for the Department of Ed. We had both of them down when we were in the midst of the deconstruction of the upper elementary school. And they stayed for a couple of hours, and looked at our process, and looked at what was happening. And they both said there was no way you could have foreseen this happening. This is something that wasn't due to lack of maintenance, or lack of knowledge of how your facilities work or anything. This was just something totally unexpected, and it really fits the definition of what this fund is designed for. So they encouraged me to put up a budget of around six hundred thousand dollars. And so with that, we get approved at the thirty percent rate, or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're going to be getting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the state when we provide them with paid invoices.
So just to finish it off, and so, once the grants were submitted, then the Public School Infrastructure Fund Committee, of which the Commissioner of Education is a part, approved ours. Then it went to the governor. You see the letters from him. Then it went to the Joint Fiscal Committee and the Executive Council, and we just, we noticed that that approval was done the end of January. And so what we're going to await now is literally from the Department of Education, a form of affidavit that will have to be signed by each of you, and by Matt as the one who wrote the grant, and me, the superintendent, in order to be able to realize those funds. The good thing is, as Matt points out, we'll have invoices for the BAT mitigation, so that we'll be able to turn around within this year. I mean, before the close of June twenty eighteen. And then the cameras, obviously, we're going to have to purchase, hopeful that our budget will pass in July. So that will come in the year eighteen, nineteen. And then we can look further at how we want to utilize that. But the timing of this was just amazing. And that's how we're able to really counteract, if you will, or underwrite the, you know, the BAT guano. So I thank Matt for his effort.
Yeah, like I said, it started off with an email from Amy Clark, and I will always read her emails meticulously when they come up to my computer, because that was, like, I couldn't believe my eyes. And I gave her a call. I says, are you kidding me? And she says, no, I'm not kidding you. I says, okay, I've got a perfect, a perfect example of what we could use this for. So, you know, really gotta, gotta thank the DOE for really working hand-in-hand with us. And I've been giving them updates, because they're just fascinated by our process and how it all went through, so.
Well, if they want mascots, we can send them up. Are there any questions or comments? I actually just have one. If you don't have it, that's fine, because we have it. I know you mentioned that the thirty-eight thousand, one eighty-five sixty would be part of the forty-seven thousand for the cost. So we, as a board, could still do the forty-seven thousand, but take the thirty-eight thousand in additional infrastructure, correct?
Yes.
So what was the amount on the cut list? If you don't know that on the spot, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Oh, it was twenty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
But, yeah.
Oh, no, no. For, this is the sped cut, I'm thinking of the special ed cut list.
The real thing to think about is, when we did the audit of the entire district, it was a half million.
Yeah.
So that's what we want to accomplish over a period of time. And we're going to probably incorporate that in not necessarily a capital improvement plan, but something equivalent, because we're going to have that, we're going to have Honeywell. So we're going to put all of that together. But the overall plan was a half million, and we decided to go with approximately ten percent in this particular budget.
Excellent. Thank you. So with no other questions, comments, we will go on to item number nine, which is review requests to conduct surveys at Merrimack Middle School with Mark.
So sometimes we talk about our dance card being punched. And this is a case where Merrimack Middle School's dance card just keeps seeming to be punched by folks who want to use it as a place for a number of surveys. So you recall, not that long ago, we talked to you about a tobacco survey that would be conducted at Merrimack Middle School. And since that time, we've received two additional requests. So I'm just going to briefly walk you through those two requests, and ask that you take them under advisement, and on the nineteenth of February, then perhaps you'd consider them, or not, under consent. So the first request is the TIMS. TIMS stands for Trends in International Mathematics and Science Study. The TIMS is a highly respected, very valuable tool that, excuse me, is used and then given back to school districts to help them in their understanding of math and science trends. And then it helps to develop a sense of a national profile about needs. Interestingly, like many surveys, there are components of surveys that ask, as the beginning, ask for information that would be considered non-academic, like your birth year, and birth date, and related information. But because of regulations in the state of New Hampshire, we're not able to But because of regulations in the state of New Hampshire, we're not able to conduct any surveys that ask for such information. So recognizing that, the folks at the DOE have worked with the folks at TIMS to eliminate any question that is of a non-academic nature. So the TIMS that would be incorporated in, that would be implemented, if you were to allow it this year, would only be academic-related questions. So in the packet that I've given you, it's, there's an example of the three different questionnaires that a school would be asked. There's a student questionnaire, there's a school questionnaire that would likely be filled out by the administration at the school, and then a teacher questionnaire. The student questionnaire is the one probably of most interest to you all. And what I've given you is the most recent, the most recent survey for which they can release information, and that's from 2015. So this does not mean, what you have in front of you does not definitely mean that these are the same questions that would be asked in the 2018 survey, but it gives you an idea of the kinds of questions that students would be asked. And so for your consideration, I bring before you the TIMS study, and as I mentioned, ask that you might consider this in consent in the February 19th meeting. Before I take questions about any of them, I would just draw your attention to the second request, which comes from the National Survey of Science and Math Education. And that one is a survey that's somewhat less known and less understood than the TIMS, but nevertheless a valid and very reasonable survey. What I provided in your packet is a description of the, the survey and a description of the sample of the questions that would be asked of teachers. This survey, I have, I would draw your attention to three parts. If you look at page D3, your state standards, please provide your opinion about each of the following statements in regard to your current state standards for science. In the state of New Hampshire, that is a very new thing. And in the district, in the Merrimack School District, it's newer still, because we just have a program, a science curriculum that this board approved back in the late summer, early fall. So we're very new in that process, and it's my opinion that our teachers wouldn't be even able or comfortable in asserting anything related to state standards yet, just because it's quite new to us. It would not necessarily be new to teachers in other states. Just as an example on D6, influences on science instruction. Again, this is very new and would be difficult for teachers to answer, I think, credibly. And then D7, likewise, science professional development opportunities. We certainly want to know what we need to be offering our teachers, and we have been and continue to, with the work of the Science Committee, investigate what kinds of professional development opportunities are needed. But that's something that we're doing internally. So the question then becomes, when a building like the high, the middle school is being asked to do so many surveys, the question really becomes, we want to balance the time it takes to complete a survey with a possible benefit to be gained, and whether or not we have anything we can, you know, share of value. And so the board certainly would, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the board will, we will do whatever the board suggests. If the question were to be asked of me, would I recommend personally that we implement this survey, this particular one? I don't see the value for us to take the time, given other requests that we've had for surveys to do this. And in addition to that, at this stage in our process, I don't know how much value any answers that we could give would be to the collectors of the, of the data. And so given that, I might suggest that this one we put off some time until our inevitable next request, when we might be better positioned to do, to do it. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Cindy?
Are you saying that it's the second one that you don't recommend?
I'm sorry, the National Survey of Science and Math Education, the NSSME.
Okay.
I believe, yeah, this one.
And you're supportive of?
The TIMS.
The TIMS.
Yeah. Just my opinion.
Andy?
So what is your, if we, if we decide that we want you to go, that we are okay with you doing the TIMS survey, the student portion, how are you going to get approval, parental approval to be able to do the survey?
We wouldn't need parental approval, because it wouldn't, it would be, it wouldn't, there would be no component of it that would be non-academic.
That's right. It's all academic based.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Michael?
Do we have any presentation of the data that we'd actually get back from the TIMS? Like examples of, and showing the value of what you would get from this?
So if the question is, would we get information back after the national study is conducted? The answer is yes, it would be national data. We wouldn't get anything that would be related to Merrimack. They wouldn't disaggregate like that.
And not like state level or anything like that?
No.
I just want to say, I do have concerns about some of the questions in here, just how they're worded, and also the last part saying that it's a test. How do you like this test? On page number 30, 31, and 32, how hard was the test compared to most other tests? This is not a test.
So what I would just say is, what I tried to do so that you'd have some sense of what it is you'd be theoretically approving, I, I provided to, I provided you with the 2015 test, which is going to be very different than the 2018 test. So I've spoken to Donna Doobie at the State Department, and, and I've said to her, you know, what are you doing about this new reg in New Hampshire about non-academic surveys? And she said, "Yep, we totally get it. We know we can't." We, they, for lack of a better word, they'd be in trouble if they authorized a survey that had any non-academic questions on it. So this is my best attempt to show you an example of the kinds of questions that would be on it. But if there's anything that relates to something of a personal nature or something, it would be eliminated from the 2018. Other language like test and so on, I couldn't tell you whether it would be included or not. But I just want you to feel comfortable that the thing that the state would issue on behalf of TIMS would be sanitized from anything that would be non-academic.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that the, it follows the guidelines, which have obviously been brought up by the state, but based off the questions that are in here, I'm a little wary of the actual requests, so.
Cindy?
I would like to propose that we allow the TIMS and the consent agenda for our next meeting, and then go with the Assistant Superintendent's recommendation of not conducting the other one. The other thing that I saw with the TIMS is that it looks like it would take them like just a few minutes. It doesn't look like, at least maybe 2018 is different, but there were just a few questions in there, and it's not like it's going to take them a half a day of testing. We're, we're talking about, I think, a pretty simple assessment that they could fill out pretty quickly.
That's my understanding.
If there's any questions that you have of, Mark, I'm sure you'd be allowed to take them offline. If, based on the answers that you're getting, if you want to have further dialogue before voting on it, anything that's on consent or even conserv for consent, we can always take off consent and make a regular agenda item, so you can vet it more publicly as well, if you feel that there's more dialogue that needs to be shared. But if it's, but if you want to talk to Mark offline, as far as some of the questions and concerns on the content, that he may be able to get some better documentation as far as how to address those concerns, it's always something. I know we just got it, so it's, there's not been a lot of time to soak it in, but obviously that's, anything that's on consent can always come off for further dialogue. That's always been our policy. So we can go with that for now, if it makes sense for you guys. And does everyone else feel that the secondary, not recommended survey can be put aside? We'll just focus on, any questions on TIMS? Excellent. So we are on to housekeeping, which is the approval of the January 9th, 2018, and January 16th, 2018 meetings. We'll take them one at a time. Can I, does anyone like to make a motion on January 9th? Moved by Cindy, seconded by Andy. Are there any edits to January 9th? Cindy?
On page two, it's just a minor picky detail. It says Board Member Barnes. And three of the line items were above, it was Vice Chair Schneider, and then previously referred to Chairman Barnes. I would just say, to make that consistent. Similarly, on page three, it says Vice Chair, I would just say Vice Chair Schneider. And that's all I have for that set.
On the January 16th one, I'm not so.
We're going to do that one separately.
Oh.
Sorry. We're just, yeah, it's different phones for different edits. So are there edits to the 9th? Seeing them, we'll put the 9th through a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries 500. I'll entertain motion for the 16th, made by Naomi, seconded by Michael. And there are edits, I'm going to start with you, Chris, because you just started it.
You have, it is written that Zev was at the meeting.
Oh, my goodness. The 16th?
Yeah.
Oh. I don't think he's in town necessarily. I think he's taking his gap year, so. We will put Puzzo. Makes more sense. Sorry about that. Oh, yes.
Also threaded through the minutes as well.
Okay, so find, replace, Cernick, Puzzo. No problem there? Are there any other edits to the minutes? Cindy?
I don't see it in there, but I felt like Vice Chair Schneider had made a comment that, something to the effect of, you may not see a lot of the questions regarding this because we've been discussing them. Yeah, like for the kindergarten, and I felt like there was some kind of a clarification that I thought might be important to the minutes, that we've been addressing a lot of these questions as we've been going through, or.
What page, do you have a page that you could kind of narrow it down to?
It would, I thought it was when we, the, on page?
I think it was me.
Three. Somebody made a comment. I thought when we were.
Yeah, I made a comment during the kindergarten discussion, that there was previous discussions in regards to other meetings, and that it wasn't just this meeting that we discussed kindergarten. So we can kind of put that in there somewhere.
And I thought Schneider did too, when we actually approved the budget, the operating budget. So maybe if we could just, if that's important, it's.
Andy?
Well, we, I would, I think we were throwing soundbites out about things that we knew about it, and today, a lot of it was clarified, so I don't know how we want to generically put that we've just talked about different areas, things that weren't on there. I mean.
We could just put a reference in there to prior, previous discussion or meetings.
I'm sure we can basically figure out a contextual way of handling that. Excellent.
I didn't catch this.
So you are.
Something.
So, there you go. Well, all those in favor of the approving the 16th minutes as amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500, and Puzzo is now on the record as being there. Okay, on to item number 12, which is consent agenda. Mark? Oh, I did skip one, didn't I? My goodness, sorry. Long night. We'll go with 11 first, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants in $500, $5,000 with that. I'm fading past.
Okay. The first one is to Thornton's Ferry School from the Nord Family Fund. This is a fidelity charitable grant, which is made possible through the generosity and recommendation of the Nord family. The total of the grant for Thornton's Ferry is $600, and that will go to educational supplies. We thank the Nord family for part one. Part two, we have the Nord family to Reed's Ferry School for the same fidelity charitable grant, made possible through the generosity and recommendation of the Nord family. And that was $200 for Reed's Ferry School for the Merrimack Early Education Program at Reed's Ferry Elementary School for educational supplies. The third one is an anonymous donor in the amount of $119 to take care of food services as far as lunch payments for kids in need. It's an anonymous donor, and the amount is $119. We thank that anonymous donor. The last one is from BAE Systems in Merrimack, New Hampshire, in the amount of $3,000. The purpose of this grant is for equipment, let me see, equipment with the construction of the, boy.
Robotics program.
Robotics, yeah. I figured it was first robotics, Chop Shop Team 166. There we go. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Peter Bergeron's writing is a little bit scratchy here, so.
That's clearly Dr. Bergeron.
So we thank BAE Systems for $3,000 for Chop Shop 166.
Lots of parts. So on that note, is there a motion? Andy?
A move that we accept the gifts and grants is read in the, in this section with our deepest gratitude.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Okay, we're really on to item number 12 now, and Mark, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We have the following educator resignation, Connor Phelps, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. In addition, we have administrator retirement, Ken Johnson, principal of Merrimack High School. And we have the following administrator nomination, Sharon Putney, principal of Merrimack High School. Principal-elect, Merrimack High School.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Cindy? As, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. And the motion carries 500. And we're on to other. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Michael?
So this might be a correspondence slash new business, maybe, possibly for the future. I had someone actually start discussing the additional apartments that are going to be built in Merrimack, possibly, at both the, near the theater for, I think it's like 200-plus units, and also the possible apartment buildings near the outlet malls for another 160 units. So they're asking if the school district has started to look into how that may affect the actual district and where those students may be if they start coming into town. So I thought it was a very valid question, and thought it might be good for us to have the administration possibly look into the process of us getting more information about that and seeing what we might want to review to be ahead of it.
Okay. Mark?
I was just going to say, I probably would ask the Community Development Director, Tim Thompson, to come here, because he's cognizant of that, I think.
Yep. And that was actually when we were looking to schedule our joint meeting, that was one of the things that I had mentioned, is why we wanted to talk about full day kindergarten. So there are a few points, not just this, so, but it didn't make the agenda, because that needs to be mutually agreed upon. So, but we will have him come as our guest instead, and we'd be glad to have him. So if we can make that happen, that would be ideal. So technically, I think we've introduced new business. So, but are there any comments to come before the board? Cindy?
It's a correspondence.
Oh, yeah, of correspondence, okay.
I had received an email, an email from a parent, and it was about the full day kindergarten, just asking me about tonight's session here, as well as the school deliberative session. I provided them with the information. I told them that I would confirm this deliberative session date, because that was still pending at that time. So I will confirm that, follow back up with the parent, and make sure they don't have any other additional questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Naomi and Andy, if you have anything to? Naomi, and Andy, if you have anything to? Paul, yours, Naomi, sorry.
I can wait. I also received a few mails and had a number of conversations in favor of putting kindergarten as, out as a warrant article.
Okay. And then, Andy and I both had one more. And actually, it was about basically how grading and recovery of grades can happen with a student that maybe didn't perform well in a graded exercise in class. So, we, I referred that to Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin, who gave basically kind of a rendering of how we, our best practices are. They're asking if we, as a board, had a policy, which, of course, we don't on how teachers run their classrooms, but still how we kind of communicate expectations in classrooms. That Dr. McLaughlin was kind enough to give a, basically thorough rendering that we could share with the parents, so. So, we also have one. Michael?
I forgot that I had one more. Individual reach out in regards to the process for budgeting, and basically the dates of each budget and when they were approved. And I responded back with the information regarding our budgeting session, the budget committee sessions, the deliberate session, and then obviously voting.
Perfect. Okay. Are we ready for comments? I think we'll start with Marge, because she has one.
I just wasn't sure where we were. I wanted to just highlight the document that was put in your packet along with the warrant, which was the response to the board's query about kindergarten in the state. That had come up during the budget hearing. Michelle Romaine, who served on the kindergarten task force, the principal of Masterco Elementary School, had taken that on as a task, and so, it wasn't complete that evening, and she went the extra mile to make specific calls. So, I thought it was interesting, if you do, if you look at the sheet, there are 150 towns offering full-day tuition-free kindergarten. There are six that offer full-day kindergarten with, that's got tuition-based. There are 10 towns that are considering full-day kindergarten that haven't had it before. And there are 16 that continue to offer half-day, for a total of 182 towns slash districts in the state, which is exactly what I think you were seeking at the time, and the DOE didn't have it. So, Michelle did a lot of calling. I wanted that to be called out at this session.
And thank Michelle for us, as well. We really appreciate the research.
Yes, thank you very much.
Excellent. So, we have comments? Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. We are on to item number 14, new business. Is there any additional new business to come before the board? Seeing none. We will go on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? I have one, the Greater Woods Subcommittee met on the 30th, and there's a spot on the district property that they are stewards of, and they're, Eagle Sky was looking to do a project, creating an outlook over the Beaver Pond that's off of the school loop trail. So, we're still looking to do more with the outdoor classroom, which is technically on school district, not on school district property, on town property, but very close to the school building, that we hope to have an Eagle project on. We didn't get one. So, now, it's really getting to a state of disrepair, and we're looking to get a strategy to get that up and running, maybe the committee itself doing the work. Naomi, and I thought, I saw Andy.
I just want to put out that the Budget Committee has obviously continued to meet, and will continue to do so until their work is done. And those proceedings are public, so they can be viewed.
Thank you. And Andy?
Just going to ask a question, but it's not appropriate. I don't think.
Well, that just sounded scandalous when you said that.
No, 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 no. I was just, I was just going to ask, could you, would you, maybe at the next meeting, report any takeaways that you've had from the Budget Committee, any interesting questions they've asked? I know, having been a liaison in the past, some of the questions they ask are interesting. Would be good to feed back to the board.
I could pop a few out there now, or I could do it next time, whatever.
Well, if you have, what you have so far, maybe.
There was a very interesting conversation regarding the most recent cut for the tutoring in special education, particularly in trying to figure out whether services were being cut versus monies being cut, and the idea that it might be shaved too low. And I think that's going to be an ongoing, ongoing question as well. That was one of the biggies.
Okay. Yes. So, are there any other? Okay, Andy?
I had a question. And I actually forgot, because we had this off week where we didn't meet in the middle because of January's month. So, on the 22nd of January, the Suresk Board of Directors met, where we had, believe it or not, Attorney Peel from, well, the law firm that represents us, but she was also there advising the Board of Directors for Suresk, essentially around the sort of, what is it, the, not the terms and conditions, the, the sort of the-
The articles.
The article, well, not the articles, the bylaws. Thank you. I was struggling for the word. Sort of recreating the bylaws of what Suresk is going to be, what's its new charter going to be, how is it going to be? So, we went through a lot of what the bylaws need to be, what the structure was going to be made up. And then, we started having some high-level discussions, again, about sort of the programs that they're looking to offer. So, we hope, over the coming meetings, that we're going to have more details on what programs they're looking to offer, what the, you know, and how it's going to be made up. It's looking like it's not going to be school district-based like it is today. It's going to be more of a way to serve all of the different districts in the state, or even beyond, in terms of functions and capabilities and things like that. So, a big change to Suresk Charter.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, your, your Suresk reports have gotten so different since you started them. It's been noted. So, on that note, we are on to item number 16, which is public comments on agenda items. And we have public. Remember that? Mic's the ringer, so.
Left.
You're it. Lots of pressure.
On. Rachel Ricker, 12 Merrill Road. Thanks for having me back.
Thanks for staying.
On agenda item around the Blizzard Bags, I just wanted to say, I thought you guys have very good questions. I want to reiterate, Mr. Thompson's alluded to that, in theory, it might be good, you know, might work, it might say, oh, wow, we can save days. But really, when you put it to practice at a district of this size, I'm not really sure it will work. Personally, I would, I would love, I'll look at the information. And I'd also, you know, Merrimack, just to reiterate, Merrimack is very economically diverse. And I would just, you know, be concerned at the ability for some students to have equal opportunity to technology and access with that. So, that just concerns me, it's a big concern. Blizzard Bags. Next is Article 7, I found very interesting, and I would urge the board to think of ways to possibly get more of the information that Mr. Schneider put forth, because if I saw that on the ballot, I might not necessarily vote in favor. But I think it is such a great opportunity, and like you said, it probably is once in a lifetime, or, you know, in our lifetime at least, to have that opportunity to purchase that parcel of land. It'll be such a great asset for our community and our school district. So, I don't know how we can do that, but, yeah, you got it. I'll tell my friends, I have lots of friends. But I, you know, just seeing that, when people read it, they might not understand how great of an opportunity that is, right? What's my last one? Oh, yeah. I don't know how to say your last name, Cindy. What? Gualuime. Gualuime. Okay, Cindy, thank you. I really loved how you want to get out not just the dates, but what goes on at these types of meetings. I know Mr. Thompson told me about the deliberation session, but maybe we can say a little bit more, or at least post a little bit more about what happens. So, is it more interactive? Are people allowed to ask questions? I don't know. I didn't know I couldn't ask questions now. And I'll be here a lot more. And also, you know, is it an opportunity for people to put forth new warrant articles via petition or not? Is that what a deliberation session entails? Like, I want to be prepared in case people put forth petitions. So, stuff like that, I don't know. So, I don't know if we can, maybe that's out there somewhere?
It is, but it isn't. RSA drives a lot of it. So, I'm kind of, but I think we do have some timelines, some budget committee posts are already on our website. So, we're still in the middle of that process right now, when it comes to deliberative session and petition warrant articles, and those are all RSA-driven, so.
So, yeah, I just, if we could just list what happens, or what can happen at a deliberative session, and whenever it is, March.
Yeah, March 8th. My fault.
Can I ask questions? Can I, can we be interactive? Can people put together, put forth that, based on the RSA's? I don't know.
Absolutely. So, and Rachel, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to talk to you offline on a one-on-one. And that way, if it sounds like you may be new to the process-
Yeah.
I'd be glad to help you offline.
Yeah, I'm new to the process, but, you know, I am heavily involved with moms in the community and just families, and I, they usually look to me to answer questions. So, it means like other people don't know as well, so I'll, great, I'll talk to you, but I think posting it somewhere helps a wider, you know, group that may not feel comfortable, like-
Fair enough. And that's what I'm saying, maybe it needs assessment, and I can work with the administration to see what we have at our fingertips.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Great. Love my first meeting. That's it.
Thanks for having me, Rachel. And sticking it out.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So, we ran out of public now, so we're going to close that. We will take a moment to sign the manifest. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Andy, seconded by somebody, we'll make it Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Thank you, and good night.